I will call a regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:30 PM. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Pietzou. Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before I ask the clerk to call a roll, Alderman Cookson is participating by telephone, and we need to ask him why he can't attend, if he can hear us, and who is with him. Alderman Cookson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm traveling on business. I am able to hear you, and I am alone.
Oh.
Sorry.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Here.
Alderman Clemens?
Here.
Alderman Dean?
Here.
Alderman Cookson?
Present.
Alderman Dowd?
Present.
Alderman Karen?
Here.
Alderman Siegel?
Present.
Alderman Shuneman?
Here.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Present.
Alderman McGinnis? Alderman LeBrun?
Here.
Alderman Moriarty?
I'm here.
Alderman O'Brien?
Present.
Alderman Lopez?
I'm here.
Alderman McCarthy?
Present.
We have 14 members present.
Alderman McGinnis is in hospital and was in sufficient pain that he felt unable to dial in to be with us. I want to wish him the best and a speedy recovery. Also present are Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Before I begin, I'm going to recognize Alderman Wiltshire for our traditional motion on motions.
Thank you. I mean that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the acceptance of procedural actions without objection.
Motion is that the rules be so far suspended as to allow for the acceptance of procedural actions without objection. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen? Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. Well, first, this weekend were a lot of very exciting and interesting activities downtown. We had the New Muse Music Festival, which featured a whole number of bands and musical performers with three stages. It seemed that, or Paul Shea's estimate is that the festival drew 1,200 to 1,400 people. I was there, and I saw a number of the board members there. I was there in the afternoon and in the evening. People seemed very enthusiastic, and I think it went very well for the downtown. One issue was that it was raining very hard through the morning up till about 12 to 1 o'clock. When we kicked off the pianos, which is another good thing that happened downtown, at 11:30 or 12, it was raining hard. Alderman Siegel came to provide a rendition, but we were all getting a little bit wet. Had it not been raining so hard through the first part of the day, I think the music festival would have drawn even more people. But fortunately, the rain did abate by about 1 or 2 o'clock, and then therefore people began to arrive. But I thought it overall was a very successful event. Paul Shea and Ben Ruddock, who were in charge of the event, did, I thought, extremely good job with it. On tonight's agenda, Mr. President, we have some appointments. Very good people have agreed to serve. Jean Porter on the Conservation Commission, Lauren Osowski for the Cultural Connections Commission, Judy Carlson for the Arts Commission, and Jay Welch and Estathia Boris as alternates on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. I want to thank all of them for agreeing to serve and coming in to be sworn in right away. We really rely on volunteers to make city government effective, and so I really appreciate their volunteering. And I know the committee was interested in their testimony when they came before the committee. Next, Mr. Chair. I did testify today in favor of the full-day kindergarten funding bill. Two versions of the bill have been pending before the legislature. One sponsored by Governor Sununu, which would provide a $9 million fixed amount targeted to communities with more free and reduced lunch children, of which we have a good number. Nashua's share of that program, if the governor's version were to pass, it appears would be $655,000 of additional adequacy grant to help pay for full-day kindergarten. There's another version of the bill, which, on a policy basis, passed the House. That would appropriate, I believe, $14 million. Nashua would realize more than the $655 under that bill, but the amount is a little more fluid. People had a little more difficulty, but it appears that we would, our share of that would be $887,000. So if we can get, if these bills can pass through the House Finance Committee and be financed, go back to the Senate where there is broad bipartisan support, Nashua stands to gain significantly from those efforts. And I appreciate Governor Sununu and, really, the entire state business community that is supporting this. Tracy Hatch was there with me today to testify in favor of the Nashua business community. There's a Ward Five Town Hall tomorrow, Mr. Chair, so I invite anyone who would like to come to that at the Main Dunstable School at 7 o'clock. We would very much, I would very much welcome your attendance. And finally, I wanted to wish Alderman McGinnis the best and hope that he recovers and gets out of the hospital as soon as possible. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period?
There are none.
Reading of the minutes of previous meetings and public hearing. If there are no objections, the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of April 25th and May 2nd, 2017, and those of the public hearing conducted by the Budget Review Committee on April 14th, 2017, will be accepted, placed on file, and the readings will be suspended. Alderman Clemens?
You meant April 24th?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
What do I say?
April 14th.
Communications. If there are no objections, communications will be read by title only.
Communication from Camille Patterson, transportation manager, relative to request for suspension of rules on Resolution 17-094.
If there are no objections, the communication will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow for two communications received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication from Brian S. McCarthy, president, Board of Alderman, relative to the Environment and Energy Committee appointment.
And if there are no objections, the communication will be placed, accepted, and placed on file, and Alderman Malisi Gola will be designated as the liaison to the Environment and Energy Committee.
Communication from Jamie Turbine, relative to support of a performing arts center.
If there are no objections, that communication will be accepted and placed on file. Petitions?
Petition for street acceptance, Northwest Boulevard Extension.
Alderman Shuneman?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the petition for street acceptance for Northwest Boulevard Extension.
Motion is to grant the petition for street acceptance for Northwest Boulevard Extension. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and street acceptance is approved. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
If I might, I'm sorry, a little, we skipped over public comment.
Oh. No one has signed up for public comment. Thank you. Reports of committees. If there are no objections, the reports of the Budget Review Committee of April 24th and April 27th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no reports, the report of, if there are no objections, the report of the Committee on Infrastructure of April 26th, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. And if there are no objections, the report of the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee of May 1st, 2017, will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the rules will be so far suspended as to allow Alderman Wiltshire to give an oral report of the Human Affairs Committee meeting held May 8th, 2017, regarding R 17094. Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. The Human Affairs Committee did meet last night and gave a favorable recommendation for Resolution 17094, which is a job access reverse commute grant from the state of New Hampshire. It was time-sensitive. The grant is 85% federal, 7.5% state, and 7.5% city. It has to be before the governor and council, before the end of June. It is to be approved for July 1st. The concern with Camille Patterson, the transportation manager, since we didn't learn about the grant until last week, that the time sensitivity would make it so that it might not make it to the governor and council and be passed before the July 1st start date. And the concern was that it might not be retroactive if we get it in any later than July 1st. So the committee did recommend final passage last night, and that concludes my report.
And if there are no objections, the oral report will be accepted and placed on file. Written reports from liaisons? Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Conservation Commission.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. I move to confirm by rule call the appointment of Jean Porter, 77 Concord Street, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Jean Porter, 77 Concord Street, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and Jean Porter is appointed to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Mr. Porter, would you like to come forward for the oath of office?
Cultural Connections Committee.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Laura Osowski, 14 Artillery Lane, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Lauren Osowski, 14 Artillery Lane, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and Lauren Osowski is appointed to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire December 31st, 2019. Please come forward for the oath of office.
Nashua Arts Commission.
Alderman LeBrun?
Thank you, Mr. President. I motion to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Judith Carlson, 15 Manchester Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1st, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Judith Carlson, 15 Manchester Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1st, 2020. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and Judith Carlson is appointed to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1st, 2020. Ms. Carlson?
Planning Board.
I just wanted to-
Ms. Carlson?
If it's all right, I'd just like to take a minute to thank the Board of Alderman for moving on to the next step with the evaluation of the Performing Arts Center. And it was a wonderful segue into amazing week in the arts here in Nashua. We had, as you all know from the mayor and those of you who attended, a wonderful festival on Saturday with not only the pianos, but the comeback kitchen table project that's all over downtown, and on Sunday, a fantastic concert at First Church. This week, we have selected an artist to do the banner project for Holman Stadium, which is going to have two huge banners of the first integrated baseball team in the U.S. And it was, all the funds were raised privately, and the artist is starting to work on that. And this, tomorrow, the Arts Commission is holding a reception for a number of the arts audiences and arts community, and we hope you will join us at 5:30 over at 30 Temple Street. And of course, there's the opening of the Sculpture Symposium. And then on Friday, both the actor singers and peacock players are opening Grease and Singing in the Rain. So it's quite an amazing art week, and I just wanted to mention that to all of you, and thank you.
Planning Board.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Jerry Repucci, 17 Badger Street, Nashua, to the City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2020.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of Jerry Repucci, 17 Badger Street, Nashua, to the Nashua City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2020. Discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and Jerry Repucci is appointed to the Nashua City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31st, 2020. Mr. Repucci here? He'll be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Alderman Clemens?
Thank you. I would move to confirm by rule call the appointment of the following individuals as alternate members of the Zoning Board of Adjustment. James P. Welsh, 3 Greenwood Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire September 11th, 2017; and Estathia Boris, 44 Balcom Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018.
Motion is to confirm by voice vote the appointment of the following individuals as alternate members to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. James P. Welsh, 3 Greenwood Drive, Nashua, for a term to expire September 11th, 2017; and Estathia Boris, 44 Balcom Street, Nashua, for a term to expire October 1st, 2018. Discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and James Welch and Estathia Boris are appointed to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for terms to expire September 11th, 2017, and October 1st, 2018, respectively. Would Mr. Welch and Ms. Boris come forward for the oath of office? Unfinished business resolutions.
Third reading of Resolution 7-17-093, amending the purpose of the Expendable Trust Fund for funding the Julia T. Ward Prize to a memorial mural project at the Amherst Street Elementary School.
Alderman Dowd?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 17093 by rule call.
Motion is for final passage of R 17093. Is there any discussion? If not, would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and R 1793 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-094, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $213,700 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority Job Access and Reverse Commute JRC program.
Alderman Wiltshire?
I move for final passage of R 17094.
Motion is for final passage of R 1794. Discussion? Alderman Wiltshire?
This is a, the grant that we discussed a little earlier that we were moving to suspend the rules on, that allows the two busiest routes to have routes every half hour. So they go to the Pheasant Lane Mall, which gets people to and from work at the mall, and they go up Amherst Street as well, and it's every half hour instead of every hour. So I think it's really important to know that people are really using the transit system to get to work, and it's important, I think, that we continue to fund this or accept this money for this. Thank you.
Alderman McGinnis? Regulately use those routes, and as I pointed out, it's about 50% of the bus ridership population. It's a very, very well-used service, and it provides a great benefit to people in Nashua.
Further discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy?
Yes.
We have 14 yeas.
Motion carries, and R 1794 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 17-096, authorizing the acceptance of an easement from Girls Incorporated over land located at 27 Burke Street.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I move for final passage of Resolution 17-096.
Motion is for final passage of R 1796. Discussion? Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Alderman Clemens?
Yes.
Alderman Dean?
Yes.
Alderman Cookson?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yes.
Alderman Siegel?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Malisi Gola?
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun?
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien? Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 14 years.
Motion carries and R 1796 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Order 17-033, limiting the second public comment period at Board of Alderman meetings to items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board.
Alderman Siegel?
And I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O 17033, and I'd like to speak on that.
Motion is for final passage of O 1733. Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a fairly straightforward piece of legislation, and what it does is it just restricts the public comment to things that we have some control over. Now, I'm going to address this whole issue of quote "free speech" right head-on. We already restrict what can and cannot happen in the chambers here. You cannot campaign for political parties. You can't wave signs. You can't have commercial sponsorships here. We don't panhandle in the chamber. There's a whole host of protected free speech, according to the court system, that we restrict. And this restriction, I think, in no way hinders public access or public comment, because if we can't act on anything, then what's happened, and what did happen, what prompted me, is people kind of parachuted in here, knowing there's cameras, were waving signs and clacking around with noise, and just making a general ruckus about an issue which we had absolutely no control over. And it seemed to be not fair to people that want to have public comment on things that are relevant, that the board can act on, nor is it fair to staff to have to transcribe this. Also, we've had instances, as we well know, where we have an individual who probably needs some attention from some facilities that maybe our mental health facilities can provide, asking us to help them with their, you know, being on fire. And again, this is not within our purview. Now, that said, anything within our purview, and there's quite a lot, I don't care what somebody says, where they come from. If they want to be nasty about what decisions we've made or how, have at it. That's fine for me, and probably fine for everyone else. That's what we do. But I see no restrictions here, no limitation of public access, or any kind of restriction on free speech that's meaningful in any way by scoping us to things that are relevant to what we can act on. We are not the only body that would do that. If you go before the zoning board, they're very strict. The planning board, the same thing. And we are wide open, and I think it works sometimes, but other times it doesn't. So I would urge my colleagues here to pass this piece of legislation. I think it's healthy for everybody.
Further discussion? Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. No matter how you slice it, this is a restriction of speech. We allow dialogue now that we would not allow after this is, if this gets passed. So no matter how you look at that, you are restricting some people from their right to speak before us. And while I can appreciate the fact that there are certainly people who come before this board who have differing opinions than I do, and who some of us may deem their speech unworthy of our attention, I feel that every citizen has a right to come and speak before us about what they feel the Board of Aldermen can help them with. Now, it is not our place to put a judgment on those people or what they're saying. If we all know Mr. Cutter comes before us all the time, and he wants us to take land from his neighbor and give it to him. We can't do that. That's been explained to him by three different corporation councils, two different mayors, and a number of people who have been on this board and are still on this board. Yet, Mr. Cutter believes that we can do something about it, and that's his right. And that's his right to come here and tell us how he feels. The same thing with the woman who you mentioned feels that she's on fire. She, that may not be what your definition of sanity is, but it's her right as a citizen of Nashua and a citizen of the United States to come before the public board and tell us what her issue is with a certain department in the city. So, you know, there's a lot of other instances that I could, that I could mention, but the bottom line is, is that we serve the taxpayers, we serve the people of Nashua. We also have a right, we also serve guests of this city, property owners of this city, visitors of this city. And when they feel compelled to sit through a meeting and ask us to put some crazy zoning ordinance in, we should listen to them, because these are the extreme examples that I point out of things where this body doesn't have any control over what could happen. However, there might be a situation where somebody comes and addresses us about a problem that we didn't know about, that's going on in our community, that we don't have any authority over. Maybe a crime that's going on in a certain area, or maybe it's a certain problem in a neighborhood that, I don't know, the Board of Public Works has jurisdiction over. But it doesn't matter. The point is, is that we should be open and listening to the people of this city and the people who take the time to take that microphone and address us. That's what we're elected to do, and that's what we should do. And by passing this, we are eliminating some people's right to speak to us, and I will not support this.
Alderman Moriarty?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just can't pass an opportunity to agree with Alderman Clemmons, which doesn't always happen between me and him. But the idea of subject matter jurisdiction of the board, sort of expounding what Alderman Clemmons had already said, pretty much everything is, not necessarily our voting jurisdiction, but as a representative, as someone who can help people out, it's hard to define what's not, what's not the jurisdiction of the board. Maybe, you understand what I'm getting at. I could certainly support something like a timer, which is, you know, it's objective, just, you know. Aside from that, I'm with Alderman Clemmons. I'm not going to support this.
Alderman Lopez?
I think Alderman Clemmons was exactly right, that we have a job, we have a responsibility to represent people and be available to our constituents. I don't know that this meeting needs to be the only venue for that, and I particularly think it's important for Aldermen to be available to people in their community so that they can have discussions with them, and also so that the Aldermen can direct them towards ways that they could actually achieve their goals. I think leaving this as an open forum where people can come and just present issues in general, it strikes me as vaguely condescending, because we're assuming, or we're giving the impression that if somebody comes and makes a public presentation and shares information specific to their experience, that we're immediately going to do something about it, when if we don't have the jurisdiction or the authority to address it, they have just shared their situation with the entire public, and it's on public record for no purpose. I think several of the examples that have been brought up have been ones that also included other parties to the situations involved, and it's insensitive for us to address those issues in a way that Mr. Cutter's having issues with his neighbors. He needs to articulate his neighbors and identify them every single time he presents in the Board of, the full Board of Aldermen. He has been actually coming to the Infrastructure Committee and presenting there instead. There has been some discussion, and I think, you know, it's been productive. Likewise, with the individual who has grievances with the Director of Public Health, et cetera. I think help could be provided, like positive guidance and effective advice versus assuring ourselves that having a public comment at the end of our meeting therefore gives everybody the chance to say what's going on. I think we need to do a little bit more than just letting people use the microphone when they want to. We should actively be trying to help them resolve their issues. And finally, I would also like to point out that there is a sensitivity issue to the people behind individuals speaking at the mic. It's intimidating to do public comment. It's intimidating to come before a board of strangers and articulate an issue. And if you've done your research and you're really focused on a particular issue that the board may be addressing that night, and you wanted to comment relative to it, it's very distracting to have somebody who may come in from an entirely different state with an alternative agenda, who's presenting that in a manner that's not necessarily appropriate. Who wants to follow that? It takes time away from the people who have pertinent conversations and may really feel passionate about an issue that we are dealing with, and I'm not sure it's fair to them either.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know who's beeping here. I thought that was Alderman Cookson for a second. A couple of things. One, I kind of resent the fact that somebody is labeling me as somehow restricting free speech. That's not the case at all. I was very clear on that, and I really don't appreciate that. Okay? The other thing is, I really appreciate my colleague Alderman Lopez bringing up the fact that, as Aldermen, we deal with a wide range of issues that are often outside our purview, and we provide guidance at that point. The question is, is the public comment period at the end of this meeting an appropriate place for people to just come in and just literally say things that have nothing we can act on as a body? Often, we help people individually, and that includes Mr. Cutter. And oh, I might add that we have the ability to override these rules. We can suspend the rules and accept this comment if we deem inappropriate. Or we don't agree, for example, with the president's assessment, that that might be outside the purview of the board. We maintain that authority. So, I mean, I just do not understand why this becomes such a touchstone. I think it's popular, like, oh, I'm in favor of free speech because I'm against this. That's just, I'm sorry. I believe that's utter nonsense, pure nonsense.
Alderman LeBrun?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too reluctantly agree with Alderman Clemmons. I hope that doesn't hit you the wrong way.
No.
But I would never restrict public input at any of my committees at the State House, nor at Hillsborough County, and I certainly could not vote to do so here in the city. Thank you.
Alderman Schunnaman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate all of the viewpoints that are expressed here. I understand what Alderman Siegel is saying about the appropriateness of this forum, but I also agree with Alderman Clemmons and his point about this being a forum where people should be able to come and speak. I don't plan on supporting this. There are other boards that have a specific targeted audience or function, let's say. If someone came before Historic District Commission and wanted to speak about a topic, some of the folks we've heard here, words, it's totally off. I would say that that doesn't belong there. But if there's a board in the city that is more general than any other, I think this is it. And I think this should be the place where people, no matter what they have to say, can come in and share their views. I think that whether it's free speech, right or not, can be debated, I suppose, but the fact that people can come in here and speak their mind at the end of the meeting and be heard with whatever they want to say, I think is an important part of how we function. I think people are much more able to face their own issues if they have some kind of venue where they can speak. And if this is it, I'm in favor of that, and I plan on not supporting this. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I look at this as not really a restrictive type of a thing, and I'll tell you why. On the sheet that I'm looking at here in the beginning of our agenda, it says, "Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening." So we have a public comment period in the beginning. Yet, we put some form of, lined a pitch, we designated what can and cannot be discussed. Taken away completely, the second public comment period would probably jeopardize, in my opinion, some free speech issues, but that's not what we're doing here. And the reason I supported this, and I am still going to support it, is because we're limiting the second public comment period to a subject matter within the jurisdiction of the board. We're liming the pitch again so that we can designate when somebody does get a little bit out of bounds. Who's going to make this decorum-type of decision? It will probably revert back to the chair, you know, the president of the Board of Aldermen. Now, if a situation comes in, and this gives us the ability to allow the person to have their communication and free speech, but if they start going a little bit off-base, I think it gives the power to where it should be, to the president of the board, to curtail the conversation back and try to refocus it to what it is. Again, this is not limiting the second public period comment. It's basically just giving it some rules of decorum, to which any legislative body has certain rules of decorum on when the public can speak or not speak. And it's usually at the call of the president or the call of the chair. Thank you.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Thank you. I am not going to support this legislation. Well, I do understand that sometimes listening to people talk about things that we don't agree with, or that might not be under the purview of this board. I think it's important to hear people, and especially people that live in this city, that own property in this city. I can't vote to stop them from speaking to this board, so I won't be supporting this.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I can shed a little light on the zoning board, having been previous chair of the ZBA. What was happening there was people were coming and testifying for hours with stacks of paper. And the only thing the zoning board is allowed to hear are things related to the five points of law for that particular case. So 17 years ago, give or take a year, I instituted, with support of the full zoning board, the stoplight, limiting the people presenting the case, mostly lawyers, to 15 minutes, and then people rebutting less time. Because what was happening, the zoning board meetings was a lot of agenda, and it used to get extended into a second night, which became problematic for everyone. So that's where the ZBA's came from. I don't think, anything that we have jurisdiction over that we ought to restrict anybody from speaking, it's very hard, though, to determine what we have jurisdiction over. That would be another thing we'd have to decide. I would support limiting speakers in the second comment period to 15 minutes, and we used to do that before. In fact, it may still be in place. So we could enforce that, and then if we want to extend it, we can have the board vote on it. And if it's something that's way off-base and it doesn't pass, and then that person's done speaking. I think that sort of takes care of all of these issues. So I'm going to recommend a amendment to O 17033. And after the word "two" in the sentence, instead of saying "items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board," that no speaker could exceed 15 minutes without the board voting to extend.
Motion is to amend by inserting the words, "No speaker may speak for more than 15 minutes." I believe, Alderman Dowd, that the next sentence limits the entire public comment period to 15 minutes, which already has that effect, so.
I was referring to any particular speaker.
But I would just point out that for anyone to speak more than 15 minutes, we need to extend the entire period as well. Alderman Dowd?
And I saw that coming. So my point is that if we're only going to have a 15-minute period, and that's what we have, we haven't recently voted to extend it. We just let it go on and on. So if we have that rule in place, we ought to enforce it. And if we want to extend it, we vote by the full board.
Do you wish to continue with your motion to amend?
I withdraw.
Alderman Siegel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm glad you withdrew that motion, and I want to point out that I had no intention of restricting the comment period further than it does, it is already. I mean, we oftentimes go well beyond 15 minutes, and I think it's valuable for this board to go beyond 15 minutes, because very often, we have had people speak about issues which are very germane and which we do want to act on. I mean, we have a substandard living conditions committee, which exists because of public comment that happened at the final public comment period, which, by the way, was added by legislation. It didn't exist before, if I, am I correct? So there was no innate right that this thing existed absent the board's acting to put it in place on its own accord. So again, this was a creation of the board, and this idea, again, that we're restricting free speech, I just don't buy into that at all. And I, and I don't know, maybe, maybe it's the fact that it's an odd year or something. I don't know. It's just unfortunate that it's been misinterpreted as somehow a restriction on free speech. Our staff has to transcribe this stuff, too, which, okay, that's fine. They often have to transcribe things which are germane to the board that may seem torturous, but that is what we do. But this, I just, I can't disagree more that this is some restriction on free, we have restrictions on free speech in here. So I'm sorry, but you cannot make that argument unless you then say, I can go in, and if I opened up a pet salon, I can discuss that, and I can campaign for office, and I can wave signs, because unless you are willing to accept that also, then you're really not for free speech. So, you know, let's keep in mind what we already restrict.
Alderman Moriarty?
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies for speaking twice. I kind of make it, try to make, I just remembered what it was that I wanted to say before I got distracted. And just something to offer, just for consideration and perspective, sort of by analogy with the fire department. You know, if you're like at your wits' end, and your health is at risk, and for some reason you don't know where the ER is, and, you know, the fire department's sort of got a reputation of the place to go when you need someone to, you know, keep you alive. And so by analogy, the Board of Aldermen, it's, my issue isn't that, that we know what's the subject matter jurisdiction of the board, but that the public doesn't necessarily know what's the jurisdiction of the board. And I like the idea of the public being welcome, like, if they're at their wits' end, and they want to complain about something, they need to talk about something, they're not sure who to go to or what to do, you just go to the Board of Aldermen. And the president in the past has done a good job of saying, we can't cover that, you want to go to Planning Board, or we can't do this, you want to do that. But that's the perspective, is the perspective of the public, that they know, and they will be able to know, that they can always come here.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I'd like to just comment on the restriction of freedom of speech and say that what I originally said was that it is a further restriction on
originally said was that it is a further restriction on speech. So, if this passes, we will further restrict people's freedom of speech, which we already do for appropriate reasons, this being an inappropriate reason, in my opinion.
Additional discussion? Alderman Lopez.
I still feel that it's inappropriate. I think we tell the public to have to sit here and watch us talk the entire meeting so that we can get things done from a practical perspective. We've talked about limiting the length of time somebody can speak. Well, some people take longer to figure out how to say certain things. We've already made decisions over who can speak. Everyone here is predisposed towards somebody who can get to the point faster. That's not everybody. We talk about how we are representing the people of Nashua, but we're not considering everybody who wants to speak and ensuring that the period for public comment after a Board of Aldermen meeting is actually something that somebody can... There can be a resolution for, and we're not protecting the other people who want to speak as well. Because if we say we have a 15-minute period of public comment, and we let a couple from Florida show up and spend nine of it talking about an activity that we can't do, we didn't give our President any tools to say, "Unfortunately, that's not actually within our jurisdiction, so I would appreciate you going to this place or that place." We're not setting up any ability to do that, and I think that's a mistake. I think we should be providing effective guidance to the public, the same way with our agenda. We guide the topics of discussion and ensure that business can actually be done.
Any further discussion? If not, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Dean.
No.
Alderman Cookson.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes. Excuse me? Yes, I'm sorry.
Alderman Siegel.
No.
Alderman Shunnaman.
No.
Alderwoman Melizigola.
No.
Alderman LeBrun.
No.
Alderman Moriarty.
No.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have five days and nine days.
Motion fails. Alderman Siegel.
I'd like to make motion for indefinite postponement.
Motion is for indefinite postponement of 017-033. Discussion? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Dean.
Yes.
Alderman Cookson.
I'm...
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Siegel.
Yes.
Alderman Shunnaman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizigola.
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun.
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty.
No.
Alderman O'Brien.
What? Come on.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
What was that?
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 13 days and one day.
Motion carries, and 017-33 is indefinitely postponed. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution 17-099, approving a first amendment to tower replacement agreement with by Verizon Wireless.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Dowd. R1799 will be assigned to the Finance Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-100, authorizing the sale of surplus Broad Street Parkway property.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Dowd, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Melizigola. And R17100 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of Resolution 17-101, relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $808,298 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into Public Health and Community Services grant activity FY 2018 and FY 2019, Public Health Network Services.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman LeBrun, Alderwoman Melizigola, Alderwoman Karen, and Alderman Dowd. And R17101 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution 17-102, relative to the transfer of $25,000 from Department 194 contingency, account 70100, general contingency, to FY 17, Department 109, civic and community activities, accounted classification 56, outside agencies, for the purpose of donating to the Nashville Association for the Elderly.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wilshire, Alderman Clemens, Alderman Siegel, Alderman LeBrun, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, and myself. And R17102 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance 17-038, allowing residents of Morgan Street to purchase overnight on-street parking permits.
And additional sponsors, Alderman Wilshire, Alderwoman Melizigola. R1738 will be assigned to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. Paula Johnson.
I still live here in Nashua, listening to all this. Alderman Clemens, I wanted to say, you're a popular guy tonight, because even I was agreeing with you, and that's a rarity. And I'm super conservative, you know?[1121.33][1121.33](Laughter). But you know what? You can't take away our rights to stand here, and unfortunately, some people don't know the right place to go. And that's the guidance, really, of Aldermen, to help them out. You know, you can talk to them after the meeting, try to show them where they need to go and what they need to do, but, you know, it's unfortunate. Not everybody knows what to do in life. But, yes, and that kind of talks about you and me, Mayor, in your office the other day with that young man that you have to open up the gate for in Mines Falls so he can go to work up on Coliseum Avenue. Did you ever get that gate open for him at Mines Falls?
Mayor Dodgers.
We're checking it out. It was hard to figure out exactly which gate he was talking about, but we're trying to... Public Works is looking into it, let's put it that way.
Oh, I understood exactly where it was. It was the entrance right around the David Dean Skateboard Park, where that big mess is now. And I also asked you if there's a structural engineer that's going to oversee the park being built, and I told you it was by the gatehouse. I understood exactly where he was coming from and where he was going to. I was glad I was there to help you that day. Now, to get on the subject one I'm here for. I've been trying to stay away from these meetings. I try not to watch this very much because I just don't like my low blood pressure to become a high blood pressure. But when I was away on vacation, I happened to be able to read the Telegraph editorial, which I want to say they did a great job for a change. They weren't such fake news. So, you're getting a compliment like Alderman Clemens is. How tight is Nashua's budget? I almost fell over here. You know, we want to take $200,000, allow citizen volunteers to essentially spend their own $200,000. How tight is our budget? We've talked about overriding the spending cap. We talk about $15.5 million for a downtown theater, for a group of people. What is government's responsibility? Does anybody know what government's responsibility is? It's not for a theater, that's private. Government's responsibility is police, fire, maybe schools. I'm beginning to think charter schools is a better deal. Police, fire, maybe schools, DPWs. Not even landfills, because we can ship it out. We don't even have to have people come and collect our trash, but we pay for that. Oh, and by the way, I want to thank everybody for my 15% increase in my wastewater, for people on fixed incomes. My bill went from $62, $78 to $90 a quarter. So, when Social Security doesn't even give you an increase this year, how do people who are on fixed incomes, not $90,000 from the city pension, I'm talking the average citizen, the 55-plus community and maybe younger people with disabilities, are we trying to push us out of here? I'm 63. Are we trying to push us out for the millennials and the snowflakes to come in here? This is really a disgrace. And I was looking at houses in the city in the Led Street area. They say the schools in that area is below average online. So, what does that tell you? $15.5 million, a restaurant, a retail store. Since when is government in that business? Government's not supposed to be in that business. And then when you build it, you know, they might come, because everybody's saying, even on Facebook, you've got Manchester to the north, and you've got Lowell and Boston to the south. Now, you don't have enough parking downtown for the parking. So, now you're going to have to renovate that. And people don't go downtown anyway because you have to put money in the meters. And we all talked about that for a long time, money in the meters. Why would people go downtown? Alex's was the anchor store downtown, and that's the building you want to buy. So, what is that, about $2, $3 million proposition? So, does that include the $15.5, or is that over and above? So, I asked Mr. Griffin yesterday, and what a lovely person he is, and very... He got me all the information, which I'll discuss probably more of this as time goes on, like, maybe tomorrow at the meeting and also the budget hearing. But he gave me all the bonds that are outstanding, and I wrote it down. We're about, right now, at about $64 million worth of bonding. That's without the interest, current bonds, and what's going to be bonded. And, you know, we've got $1.6 million for the fire station, $37.5 million for street repairs, and that's going to be, I guess, $7.5, give or take, every year. We don't even know what the Burke Street property is going to be, but that was, like, I think, a $4.2 million proposition. That's a toxic waste building over there that, when you walked in there, you could smell the mold, you could see the mold, and a friend of mine who used to work there explained everything in that building. So, we're going to retrofit that building and clean it. So, what's that going to be, $20, $30, $40 million? Chaching, another bond. So, how much do you think the citizens of this city can take with all this spending? I have to prioritize my bills. Why aren't you prioritizing what needs to be done in the city? A theater is not top priority. You complain that the roads were no good, so you're bonding the roads. So, what else? I mean, how much more are you going to spend? Think about it. So, next time you go out and you go to Hannaford or Market Basket, look at some of the people who are working, bagging, look at some of the elderly, and look at what they have in their cart, and look at what some other people with government assistance has in their cart. We work for it. We can't retire. There's no such thing as retirement anymore in this country because government is out of control with spending, and I'm asking now to stop this spending once and for all. We don't need a theater downtown, and we don't need to train for... And that's another bond. Thank you.
All the board members of the Board, I'll start over on this side. Alderman Lopez.
I just wanted to announce, I was running a little bit of an informal contest called the Golden Shovel over the winter. It was a way to figure out if we could get encouraged neighbors and businesses to do a little bit of shoveling so that we could make sure that our streets are a little more passable. It was all volunteer, but we did have a prize as well. And I just wanted to recognize one of our residents, Kenny Blaha, who made sure to shovel on at least nine different snowstorms just so that his neighbors could pass. So, the contest was by vote. Ultimately, you get a little bit of a bonus each snowstorm that you shovel for, but it's your neighbors decide who is getting the award, and he was recognized with it. So, I just wanted to thank him for all the work that he put in over the winter.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would just... President, I would just like to announce on Wednesday, May 17, up at the Conquered in Room 203 in the Legislative Office Building, House Bill 267, which is repealing the rail authority, is going to be... It's a work session. It's going to be discussed. This is important. If we are ever going to get commuter rail, some of the monies are going to have to go to some organization, so therefore, repealing the rail authority is kind of short-sighted, particularly if the President says he's got some shovel-ready projects in the future. We're going to need the rail authority to accept the granting. So, we'll see what happens, but those that are interested are welcome to join us. Thank you.
Alderman Melizigola.
Yes, I just wanted to echo the mayor's congratulations to Great American Downtown for the success of their event this weekend. Unfortunately, we weren't able to attend, and I hope I'm not taking some of Alderman Karen's news, but the Nashua Senior Center will be having their plant sale on May 20, and it's in Ward 8 up on Shakespeare, so Saturday, May 20. And I hear they have a great selection of plants.
Alderman Siegel.
And first off, I'd like to wish our colleague Alderman McGinnis well and speedy recovery. I'd also like to thank Paul Shea and Ben Ruddock. I was at the New Muse Festival, spent quite a bit of time down there, in the rain and outside of the rain, and it really, really was well done. And considering, you know, the conditions that we're in, very, very happy that the sun came out because it is the first year of the festival, so it was really good. If you didn't go there, try to show up next year.
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, I just wanted to take the time to wish my former work colleague, Alderman McGinnis, and obviously, my colleague here on the Board as well, the very best, and I hope he has a speedy recovery.
Alderman Wilshire.
I too wish Alderman McGinnis a speedy recovery.
Alderman LeBrun.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to mention that the Greek Food Festival will take place on May 19 and 20 at St. Phillips Greek Orthodox Church, just off Exit 5.
I also want to congratulate Gad on the music festival over the weekend. I was downtown Saturday night. A lot of people seemed to be having a good time despite the weather. I was interested to see that even with Main Street blocked off in order to put the stage in the middle of the street, we were actually able to run the Main Street trolley all night around that, so kudos to the Transportation Department for having done that as well. Committee announcements? Alderman Shunnaman.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Infrastructure Committee and Alderman Cookson, who's the Chair, not here this evening, tomorrow's night's previously scheduled Committee on Infrastructure meeting has been canceled. We will not be meeting tomorrow night. The next meeting will be on the regular cycle, May 24, here in the chambers.
Other announcements? Is there a motion? Alderman Wilshire.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Dean.
Yes.
Alderman Cookson.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Siegel.
Yes.
Alderman Shunnaman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Melizigola.
Yes.
Alderman LeBrun.
Yes.
Alderman Moriarty.
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman McCarthy.
Yes.
We have 14 days.
Motion carries, and we are adjourned at 8:37.
Good night, Mark.